Ladies and gentlemen, the cameras are rolling, the microphones are on. A very happy eclipse day to you all and welcome to City Hall for tonight's special City Council meeting. The meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bowring?
Here.
Bruno? Ruby? Kilburg?
Here.
Casarad?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Tashki? Swanson?
Here.
Just for the record, Madam Clerk and everyone else, Alder Person Ruby did text me she should be here in about 10 minutes, so we will record that when she arrives. We'll begin our meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask our Human Resources Manager to please lead us in the pledge.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the purposes of putting this item on the floor prior to a brief introduction, I'd like to entertain a motion to recommend approval of Resolution Number 2024-40, proposing redevelopment plan and project for Southeast Master Plan and adoption of tax increment financing, scheduling public hearing, and Joint Review Board. Motion by Bowring, seconded by Mayor. Stephanie, do you want to add anything prior to my comments? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, members of the community tuning in, those present tonight, I'm going to recite almost verbatim a March 28th email from our city administrator, Ms. Dawkins, to the City Council regarding the purpose of tonight's meeting, just for context and clarification. Per recent conversations with all of you, the city's public review process for the mill, excuse me, the Midwest Industrial Fund's Geneva Industrial Park located in the Southeast Master Plan, otherwise known as SEP, will begin in April. In preparation, the Southeast Master Plan, TIF 4 Redevelopment Project Area Tax Increment Financing District Eligibility Report and Redevelopment Plan and Project has been placed on file at City Hall and is available on the city's website. The TIF formation process includes requirements for public notice, a meeting with certain taxing districts such as the Joint Review Board, and a public hearing. The City Council will consider an ordinance setting the dates for these meetings at a special City Council meeting on April 8. The development review process separate from the TIF process will begin with a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission this Thursday, April 11, 2024. So for clarification purposes, tonight, all we are doing is setting the dates in motion for those additional conversations before the taxing bodies, et cetera. Are there any questions regarding what we are considering tonight under Item 1A? Yes?
I do have a question, and that's in the resolution itself. I think it's the seventh paragraph in the "whereas" area where it says, "The mayor and City Council of the city have determined that it is in the best interest of the city to initiate the process for establishing a TIF district within the redevelopment area." I guess I take exception that we have decided that it is in the best interest. We haven't concluded that, so the wording seems going further than what we've debated or voted on so far.
I would respond that we have decided as a body, and of course, that action is taken by a simple majority vote, that we have determined advancing the process for a TIF is in the best interest. That determination, of course, will be made throughout the regulatory process. We, as a council, have determined that it's the best way to move forward. If those other agencies, planning and zoning, et cetera, Joint Review Board say no, or excuse me, just Joint Review Board say no, then we have something else to consider. That's my interpretation. It is not a preordained decision by any means. In fact, members of this council can choose otherwise as well. If anyone on the council believes that we have somehow inappropriately, or perhaps, what's the word, let's see, preordained this process, please speak now.
May I explain the problem I have with the process?
Fire away.
And that is, we received the information that we have the eligibility study, which is fine.
Sure.
That tells us that it is eligible to be a TIF. However, we were not able to ask questions about it, we were not able to verify whatever information was in there, and I think that's a step that needs to take place. And I think what you're saying is different, the PCC and other bodies are going to do that, but I guess, what's the point in giving it to us, then?
The Joint Review Board will handle the TIF questions, of course. The actual development project, which is not germane to this evening's discussion, will be reviewed first by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then, of course, by the council. Your question was asked, I know, today earlier to City Administrator Dawkins. City Administrator Dawkins explained that there will be a presentation tonight to tee all this up, so that we all understand. Those questions are relevant, should you choose to ask any additional questions, but to ask those prior to, in my opinion, Joint Review Board or the development project itself in terms of the project supersedes, or dare I say leapfrogs, the responsibilities of those organizations prior to reaching our deus for ultimate decision.
Okay, so, we're talking timing.
Well, timing is critical.
Timing and...
Timing is critical. If you would prefer to have discussions regarding the project and Joint Review Board authorities now, what's the purpose of Planning and Zoning Commission and the Joint Review Board?
Understood. I guess, in this situation, though, we're proposing moving forward with the process of establishing a TIF, and if a resident calls me and says, "What's this all about?"
Sure.
What is, what is in the 185 mil, or whatever the dollar amount is in that, we have no idea. And so, we can't even respond to that question without...
You will be able to respond after tonight's presentation.
Can I jump in here? So, the Alder Person's question's a good one. This resolution simply initiates the process. There will be hearings, under which each and every question, yours and your colleagues, with respect to the TIF, its designation, its eligibility, its proposed use, the redevelopment plans, et cetera, will be brought forward before a vote. This is not a fait accompli. This is simply scheduling hearings, including the designation hearing, the ultimate hearing on the TIF, and setting forth a map for the process. And your questions, issues, et cetera, absolutely are germane at that time.
But not prior to review of and by the other organizations that have the right to conduct that review.
Okay. I understand what you're saying, so, thank you.
Of course, thank you. The motion is offered...
No.
Excuse me. Yes, Alder Person Kilburg?
He's got his on, too. He was first. No, I guess, explain, then, when we'll have an opportunity to question.
Question what?
The TIF. That's what we're talking about. In other words, in the process, where does the council have an opportunity to state their, or provide their input?
It's in the document before you and in your packet. I can't read that, it's too small, but if you want to go...
No, I want clarification, just so I...
June 3rd.
And what, how is that meeting titled?
It would be titled, I presume, a City Council meeting, where we would consider and vote upon the TIF.
It will be designated as, again, Alder Person, matters have to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's a redevelopment plan, there's an annexation component, zoning, the whole master plan. Ultimately, on June 3rd, it will be designated as a TIF designation hearing for approval. It's in the resolution that that ultimately will be before this council.
And then, when will the public have an opportunity to provide input? Are there multiple occasions?
Well, it's like any other...
Well, I'm asking for clarification, because we've had questions on this before. That's all I'm simply asking.
Any resident of this community, or any resident of this world...
Well...
Can email any council member and ask questions.
Understood. I'm just saying, as it relates to a public forum, when will they have the opportunity to ask questions?
The resolution talks about the public hearings.
If you're talking about TIF and only the TIF, the public hearing for the residents and anybody else is on June 3rd. That's also the same time when the council then gets to deliberate and ask their questions. That doesn't happen until after the Joint Review Board meets and makes a recommendation that TIF is the appropriate mechanism.
No questions at planning and zoning?
Not on TIF.
Not on TIF, correct.
Planning and zoning, there's the public hearing to, about the development, the redevelopment, but that is separate and apart from the TIF.
Okay. That's all I needed, was just a clarification, so that...
And to add to the confusion, the public hearing is held at the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the development itself. There is not a public hearing at the council meeting regarding the development. We are to deduce all the testimony provided at the PCC for our consideration at the council meeting. TIF, of course, is different. We have a public hearing at the council meeting for the TIF.
Okay. I think, for the public, a lot of this can be confusing, and that's why I wanted clarification, so the public had an opportunity to hear when they're going to have an opportunity to speak.
Anyone else? We have a presentation by our Economic Development Director, Kathleen Timoshenko. Following that presentation, then we will vote on the motion offered by Bowring and seconded by Mayor.
Good evening. Okay. Okay, thank you very much, Mayor. My name is Kathleen Timoshenko, Economic Development Director. So, as Mayor Brun outlined, our main purpose tonight is to establish dates and procedures to begin the public review for establishment of TIF 4. TIF 4 is intricately connected to the Southeast Master Plan, of which the primary land use is industrial. Establishment of TIF 4 is essential to the furtherance of the Geneva Business Park Number So, industrial development in this area adjacent to the county line is not a new concept. The city has been planning for this expansion for over 50 years, and has taken a series of proactive steps, including boundary agreements, annexation agreements, acquiring easements, designing utilities, and planning for the Couts Road extension in cooperation with public jurisdictions and private property owners. So, for several years, the Southeast Master Plan has been the guiding force for decision-making when it comes to this project. So, the SEP was initiated in 2010, and that happened because there were three individually-owned properties placed on the market. And the city started to receive inquiries and tried to work to figure out how this plan would be moved from paper into practice. So, the SEP plan helped to define the strategy, and it was completed in 2012, and it includes land use recommendations, road connections, utility extensions, access and circulation, transit, and open space recommendations. So, implementing the SEP continues to be a top priority for the city. The strategic plan includes economic development goal of securing a resilient local economy through new commercial and industrial opportunities to expand and diversify the tax base. Economic Development Strategic Plan action items include completing annexations, defining public-private partnership, and extending Couts Road from Route 38 to Fabian. The goal to further industrial development in the SEP is rated as a top priority each year when we meet for strategic planning, and that is reflected each year in decisions made during budgeting. So, why is industrial development important to helping us meet our strategic plan goals of creating a resilient local economy? So, in Illinois, manufacturing is the largest industry and the highest contributor to the statewide GDP. In Kane County, it's responsible for $17.2 billion put toward the local economy. So, what does this mean in Geneva? So, in Geneva, there's room to grow our economy through additional industrial manufacturing. So, the property tax and the sales tax accounts for 61.3% of the city's general fund. The general fund pays for a majority of city operations, police, fire, public works, administration, community development, economic development. So, annually, levies of all taxing districts, property tax levies, are spread across the total EAV for the city. As shown in the chart with the blue towers, the majority of the EAV value is in residential properties, and that's about 79% of the EAV property value. So, if the proposed industrial development were completed today, and, you know, other things didn't change, the industrial EAV would increase to 12%. If the proportion of share of industrial was increased and residential, so the residential burden would decrease, the residential tax payment would be lower, so it's spread. So, sales tax is interesting, too, because we have, right now, a very small percentage coming from manufacturing. Interestingly, presently, one of our top 10 sales tax generators is in the Geneva Business Park. So, we have room to grow here, too, because it's potential that we would be able to see a new tax generator located in the proposed business park. So, there's a lot of benefits that we can talk about, and I tried to highlight a few of them. We definitely would see more jobs coming to the community. The photo there is from somebody who works at Geneva McCormick at Fona. Geneva and our market area is home to a food manufacturing cluster. Food manufacturing is the sec, is the largest manufacturing sector in the state of Illinois. The U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics accounts the food manufacturing sector as one of the largest employers in the manufacturing category, responsible for 87,500 jobs. In Geneva, six of our top 10 employers are industrial users. This is growing with the expansion of General Mills and the addition of Ann Toon's Bullet Campus. Infrastructure investment is also realized through new industrial development. So, the state of Illinois recognized this, and they awarded the city of Geneva the Rebuild Illinois Grant for economic development. We didn't get it for infrastructure, we got it for economic development, and we were just one of 11 who received that funding, so we had a very positive response to the park that is being proposed. Infrastructure benefits go beyond construction. Industrial users are amongst our top rate payers in Geneva. In electric, nine of the top 10 of our biggest users are industrial. For water, the top 10 out of 20 are our largest users. So, new utility company, customers are rate payers, they help to pay the rate, but not only do they do that, they offer opportunities for the reinvestment in the utility, to have funds available to make the changes and the types of improvements that are needed for our utilities to stay state-of-the-art. So, there's other numerous economic growth benefits for existing businesses, I'm sure you can think about them, hotel stays, patronizing restaurants, other businesses, new employees coming in. So, when we talk about our market area and our food cluster, you know, what exactly are we talking about? So, Geneva is within the central Kane-Dupage submarket, and there's a small map in the insert. On the other side is a blow-up of that area, and as you will see, all the white dots are industrial, current industrial users, and the little blue rectangle is our site. So, you can see that the area is, been developed in this way over time. So, Geneva has a significant amount of infrastructure that needs to be completed to enhance our submarket, and that includes the extension of Couts Road from Route 38, from Fabian to Route 38. So, the proposed Geneva Business Park 3 is scheduled for public hearing, as the mayor said earlier, annexation, planning, and development beginning this month. Midwest Industrial Fund has acquired 211 acres, and it is proposing a multi-phase build-out of eight industrial buildings, alternative plans, call for 12 buildings. So, the park is proposed to be a master plan, Class A business park, with covenants, conditions, and restrictions. There'll be natural areas with dedicated conservancy easement for perpetuity, and the developer will focus on build-to-suit. So, what does it mean when we talk about a Class A park? It's a type of building adapted for a combination of uses, assemblage, processing, manufacturing, products from raw materials, or fabricated parts. Additional uses do include warehousing, distribution, and maintenance facilities. Build-to-suits are constructed to a specific desires and specification of the end user. Typically, a developer owns the land and enters into a contract with a buyer and builds to the owner's specifications. It is a mischaracterization to refer to this corporate park as a warehouse development. We will see continued patterns of development like that in adjacent Dupage Corporate Park and in surrounding areas in Geneva, St. Charles, Batavia, which are currently home to several prestigious corporate headquarters. So, a public-private partnership is proposed. This has been talked about since the SEP plan was originally written, where tax increment financing was identified as a key way to be able to bring forward necessary improvements. The private sector can't do it alone, and the public sector cannot do it alone. There's a lot of challenges, a lot of substantial upfront infrastructure and site preparation costs. When we look at the route, I mean, the Couts Road extension, you see there's a big embankment, signalization is needed on both sides. We have, we had off-site public utility easements, and there was a lot of coordination between public and private. The partnership structure has been worked on by the city, attorneys, property owners, and teams of municipal financial consultants on both sides of the table. Financing is proposed to be a combination of private equity and debt, funds, public funds generated from the Electric Enterprise Fund, TIF funds, State Rebuild Illinois Funds, Upper Illinois River Valley Development Authority Enterprise Fund, and reduce development fees, city and county. Tax increment financing is a key funding mechanism identified in the SEP plan. TIF is a development and redevelopment incentive strategy authorized by state statute. It is our bridge to be able to move long-range and strategic plans to implementation by allocating future increases in property taxes from a designated area to pay for improvements only within that area. A TIF program lasts for 23 years. So, how does TIF work? TIF leverages the incremental growth in valuation or tax revenues to finance infrastructure and other improvements that support community revitalization and economic development. TIF captures tax increment for investment into the district. Tax increment is the difference between the amount of property tax generated before designation and the amount generated after development and designation. Property taxes collected on properties included in the TIF at the time of designation, which is referred to as the base level, continues to be paid to the taxing districts during the life of the TIF. Property taxes generated by the increment increase in the value of these properties after the time are available for all to use, all taxing districts to use. So, we have a good exhibit of what I just explained. So, you've got, the purple is the base EAV, the time that you're creating the TIF, and the assessed value rises due to development. You have the capture of the increment, which is able to be used to fund the development, and then, post-project, you have a new higher assessed value that is spread to all the So, the proposed redevelopment project area, which is the RPA, consists of 20 parcels, approximately 297 acres. It's roughly bound by Roosevelt Road, Fabian Parkway, the Dupage-Kane County Line, and Kirk Road. The redevelopment project area encompasses more land than that proposed for the business park, including other areas that qualify and are in need of improvement. So, a few years ago, when the area was studied, we did study a larger tract, and some of the land didn't qualify, and some is not ready to move forward, so it's not included in the, in the area. The proposed RDA, it consists of mix of residential, commercial, and vacant land. So, designation requirements that were discussed earlier, we have the resolution tonight proposing the redevelopment plan and project for the Southeast Master Plan and adoption of the schedule for public hearing and Joint Review Board and creating the interested party registry. This is really the kickoff, so that we can begin to dig deeper and answer questions and review the proposal. So, our recommendation is that we receive authorization to continue forward. The city has a history of success with TIF districts, developments, and projects. It's been a tool that has helped direct economic growth of the city since 1982, so we look for support for continuation of the process. I'm happy to answer any questions or...
Questions for the Director, Alder Person Mayor?
Can you go back to the map of the TIF district? Can you explain why the railroad right-of-way extends west as part of this?
Yes. So, years ago, there was annexation of the railroad right-of-way, and I think the thought, in my research, I wasn't here, this was a long time ago, I think the thought was that that's how they were going to, you know, get to the boundary to establish, because the city, there's a facilities planning area for the city, and the facilities planning area is determined, we have the boundary agreements with all of our neighbors to say these are the borders, and so, the city's relies on the facilities planning area to plan for utilities, and we understand that this is what we will serve. And at one point, they had an annexation of the railroad right-of-way, thinking that that would create that. Since that time, there's been case law and changes, so it doesn't do that anymore, but we did need to annex the portion of the railroad that goes through the project. We actually have utilities, and we, one of the easements that we have is to go... is to go under the track for our utilities. So it's necessary to be in the district, and that's just where the property line goes to.
Okay. Because those properties to the west of Kirk, right there where that little stub goes, those aren't part of Geneva yet, correct? The ones that back up to that right-of-way?
Yes, it is. Yeah. That's been annexed into the city.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the...
I'm talking about to the north side of the tracks.
North side, okay.
Right here?
It's, it's like a fence with a lot of stuff.
I think she means east of Kirk?
West of Kirk.
I mean, west of Kirk, north of...
North of the tracks.
Yeah, right where your cursor is.
Right there, yeah.
That's not, no, that's not in the boundary.
Okay.
Anything else, Alder Person Mayor? Alder Person Kilburg?
The, my understanding is, is that there's flexibility as it relates to the length of a TIF. Is that correct?
You can do one under 23, and if you wish to extend it, you can get a 12. Actually, I think there's one that had two extensions so far. But you can get an extension, but it takes an act, as this council knows, of the legislature. Because I think we've got an extension of one of our TIFs.
Well, that's what I'm, my next question was, what's the history of TIF I then? As a point of reference, if that's an appropriate question.
It is.
I just asked for the history and the length of TIF I.
There was no extension for TIF I, as I'm aware of. It was a 23-year TIF. 23-year TIF.
Just for the public's knowledge, TIF II?
TIF II was recently extended with the last general assembly.
Which this council lobbied our respective taxing bodies to support that extension.
So that was extended from 23 years to...
35.
35.
35 years, okay. And then TIF III obviously is, what are we into, TIF III about?
It was formed in 2016, so 12 years.
So we're less than 10 years, okay. Okay, just, I think that type of information can be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for the benefit of the public as well, TIF, the TIF recently extended was extended by unanimous vote of the city council. Unanimous, or excuse me, unanimous vote by all taxing bodies, save for our friends at one of them. And there was only one no vote. Alder Person Kusrock?
You asked, or I'm sorry, you said it's a mix of residential vacant and industrial. I was wondering where the residential is.
Right here.
Right in there? Oh, off of like Old Kirk Road?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So that's gonna be, I'm sorry, that's gonna be part of it?
Well, the city annexed that property and zoned it industrial several years ago. I don't have the date. Do you remember the date? And there is the ability to keep the existing uses for, you know, as long as they wish to remain. But...
I see. Thank you.
Anyone else? Before I recognize Alder Person Mayor for a second time, anyone else wish to comment on the presentation? Alder Person Mayor?
So now I'm looking at the little crescent that's left out between Fabian and the southern boundary, which is some, you know, there's a dog daycare there and some other mixed use.
Batavia.
It is Batavia. Oh, okay. That answers that.
Are we sure?
There's a motion to...
Can we check?
Anyone else? Alder Person Ruby?
Thank you. So just a basic, basic question if, to, as basic as you can frame it. For those unfamiliar with, with TIFs, I have a lot of people that trying to explain the entire concept of a TIF II to give understanding of this whole process. So in this case, we have 20 tax parcels or 20 potential people who are, or addresses who will benefit from the TIF?
We have 20 pins included.
And so those, those 20 properties are the ones who will receive the, the financial assistance?
No, you make, you don't automatically get financial assistance when you form the TIF. You have to enter into redevelopment agreements to provide for...
Right, they have to apply for TIF funding. But those 20 parcels are eligible to apply for the funding?
They would be eligible, yes. If you were in the district, you would be eligible to, to do that, yes.
Okay. And then the, the more complicated question. Can you summarize where the funding, what the funding source is for the TIF?
Sure. I'll, I'll go back to the chart because I hope that can be useful. So when the TIF is created, you'll see the arrow there that shows the ti, on the timeline, the TIF is created. So at the time of creation, you look at all of the assessed value for the area, and you designate that as the base.
So, I'm sorry, the area of just the, the TIF or of all of Geneva?
Yes, within the boundaries of the district. So within the boundaries of the redevelopment area. So you would designate that as the base. And the base amount continues to be paid to all of the taxing districts within the area. What is captured by the TIF is any increases in the assessed value over the years. You've got the timeline on the bottom, the 23 years. So as property develops and it has a higher value or through natural increases that are done triannually, you would capture the incremental dollars during that 23-year period. And then those are the funds that you're able to commit to TIF-eligible expenses. You, you have a list of things in the statute that you could use money for. And you're able to commit that through the redevelopment agreements that you have. And then at the end of the 23 years, you close out the TIF. You would provide any surplus funds that are left over back to the taxing districts in an equal way. And then you would dissolve the district. And the following year, those taxing districts would receive the full amount of tax. There's nothing else captured any longer.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yes, yes. So I, just more questions. Is there a number right now that you can put on the assessed value currently? I mean, because currently, all we have is a few homes, and the rest is all... There, are there any other tax generators in that area right now?
We do have those numbers.
While you're looking that up, the annexation occurred on July 20th, 2020 for the residential properties.
So the current EAV, which the most current that we have available to us, is 650,006.47. Pardon me?
To all bodies.
Yes.
Okay.
And then the total estimated taxable for the proposed area at the conclusion of the 23 years is estimated to be 116 million. So it provides you a way to use the development itself to help pay for some of the costs of the development.
Okay. And if, if this wasn't a TIF, where would that, where would that funding go? Because you're, you're taking the surplus and putting it into the TIF.
Well, I would say if it wasn't a TIF, you're not gonna see that type of investment.
Okay.
You, you have such a heavy lift to pay for. You, you're not going to get a developer that is going to be able to have any kind of return on investment if they have to do all that. Now, to the contrary, the city could do it ourselves. We could tax the entire city to expand the road.
Right.
To expand the, it would be risky because it would be a build-it-they-will-come situation. So this is a way to try to intertwine all of those workings. So you have a developer who has the ability to make a certain level of private investment. And we check that. It's based on rate of returns. You, you check their numbers. You, you decipher them. You have a third-party consultant examine them. And you are able to then parlay that and use that together with public funds to be able to get to a point where the development makes sense, and you get it done. And the benefit of it is, even though the taxing districts are, you know, sitting back for a while and, and letting the development occur, and they're not immediately benefiting from every building that goes up, we're asking them to come and partner with us to get to the point where we can show, where we can realize all of that benefit. Because but for the tool, it won't get done.
Okay.
The city has had this vision since the early days that I, you know, had in the plan. It's always kind of been out there and discussed and, and desired and understood as a way to, you know, kind of complete the development of the city, to have this balance between different land uses and tax generators. And how, how do you get there? So, you know, that, that's been the challenge. You know, the Southeast Master Plan, it's, it's a big step for the city. And it's a big step to, that will have many, many benefits for years to come. And when you look at the city, there's not really a lot more to develop. But the opportunities that you have going forward will be redevelopment. Because when you create a modernized area to be able to place industrial and build new buildings, you, you potentially could have the reuse of some of the older locations where in, in our downtown that have industrial. So it, it could be, you know, a real, not only bringing this park in, but also kind of re-opportunitizing those sites that, you know, are, are ready, primed for development within, within the downtown and outskirts of the downtown. So, so it's a big, it's a big deal.
Okay. And I'm pretty sure I already know the answer to this, but it's only industrial? So housing, like affordable housing, for example, would not be an option for this?
Well, there's more land than is programmed for industrial. Industrial is the main land use for the SEP. But there's other properties that, let me go to that. You know, along Roosevelt Road, there's a 13-acre property that I know as the Jane Site. It was proposed several years ago for a mix of housing and office. It was called the Enclaves. When the, when the economy took a turn, it was, it fell into, you know, unrealistic development territory. The, the owner put some improvements in, but he didn't finish it. So you've, you've got a 13-acre site there that potentially you, you might have some opportunity. You have other sites that are not within Midwest Industrial Fund's holdings that could potentially be used for that. We would have tried to make the district bigger if it would have qualified. So part of that is just trying to work within what you could qualify. And it has to be a contiguous area. So if one property doesn't qualify, you can't, you can't get past it.
Okay. And just a final point of clarification. So anyone who lives, like a homeowner who lives outside of this area, our, our taxes are unaffected?
Right. You just, you have no change.
Right.
Hopefully, you'll have some change at the end of the TIF district.
Okay. Okay. And I'm sorry, I'm backing up a little. Sorry, I was late tonight. To the discussion that occurred at the start of the meeting. So tonight, council, this is just a formality. This is my first beginning of a TIF. So this is, this is what kicks it off, and theoretically, and I, I know this won't, I shouldn't say I know. I'm quite certain this won't happen, but theoretically, if it were voted down tonight, the whole thing would just be done? Would it still, would it still advance?
Theoretically, no, it would not advance, but all we're doing tonight is setting the dates.
Right, that, right. Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure I understood the whole thing. Okay. And then one more question, then I'm done. Again, from earlier, the, talking about the, the public having the opportunity to ask questions. I specifically want to define, because this has come up multiple times in my ward, not only when the public can ask questions, but more importantly, when they can get answers publicly. I know they can email anyone at any point, but at what, at what venues will the public have the opportunity to get their questions answered publicly?
The Planning and Zoning Commission is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to attend that, ask questions, oftentimes, the developer and/or staff will provide commentary based on those questions.
Okay.
City Attorney Finson will be present on Thursday evening at the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And what topics are on the, on the table? Is it MIF and the TIF or on Thursday?
It's the Midwest Industrial Fund's proposed development.
Okay, so just the development, not the TIF?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
And the TIF public hearing is at the city council meeting on June 3rd. And that's where the public hearing is with the TIF.
And...
And that's, that's assuming or proposing that the JRB recommends a TIF.
Sure.
They have to do that first.
Okay. So, but in our meetings, there is no Q and A. It's, the public gets to voice...
There's a public hearing on the TIF.
Okay.
Distinched from public comment.
Okay.
Public hearing means you can ask questions.
Okay. But, but it's at council chambers?
Correct.
Okay, that's where I got confused. Okay.
But not for the development. The development occurs at the Planning and Zoning Commission.
This Thursday. Okay, thank you.
Alder Person Bowery?
Thank you very much, Kathleen. I really appreciated this presentation. I know this has been, as you said, a long time coming. And I know, yeah, I mean, there's been some informal discussion about it, but it's nice to see the process moving along. I personally am excited that we are at a juncture where we can explore this possibility. I think it has the potential to really benefit all of the taxing bodies that will be affected and to really help secure reasonable and long-term secure tax base for all of those taxing bodies, including the city. I did have one question, I guess tangentially related to what Alder Person Ruby was asking, which is, so if you go back to the slide where we're looking at the base EAV and the later... So my understanding, and I may be putting the cart before the horse, so let me know if this is not an appropriate question, but generally speaking, at the beginning of a TIF, you have some seed money that goes in to kind of jumpstart things. Do we have an understanding, if we get to that point, of, of where that initial funding might come from?
So I think all of the funding to date, there's been a lot of expenditures that have brought us to this point. And they've come from a variety of sources. They've come from the general fund. They've come from the enterprise funds. They've come from grant funds, and they've come from private developers. You know, we've had a developer who has carried a lot of water with the project also. So all of those things have been, you know, approved by city council or gone through the process. So all of those things have been, you know, approved by city council or gone through the process, the budget process. Once the TIF is established, there's no money that would need to go into it to kickstart. You're going to try to create a program that will either allow for some type of bonding or a pay-go situation. And we have a combination of that and we'll be talking about that as we move forward. You know, my, I feel like my job is to, and Stephanie and all of us, is to minimize the risk for the city. So that has been the marching orders. Because even though you have, you know, several buildings proposed, you don't know for sure that they'll get built, you know, things, things. So you want to try to be able to get enough money to kickstart things, but at the same time, be really conservative. Now, our, our city council has already made some decisions about the electric infrastructure and that's been through the enterprise fund and a bonding ordinance, I believe it's an ordinance, right? That has been passed probably what, two months ago now?
The bonds have been issued.
The bonds have been issued.
They're out, 30 million.
So, yeah, so that's, that's out there. But it's not like you're, I, I, I hope I answered the question.
Yeah, so, so to clarify, we're not, are we anticipating further bonds at this point? Or at this point, we think we have enough to start with the initial projects that we see on the horizon? And then that, again, assuming we go forward with the TIF, et cetera, then that'll help generate, looking at that triangle, the beginning of the, the beginning of the triangles that goes up. Okay.
Yes, from, you know, we've, we're trying to be very conservative. We're not going to propose that we take a high risk and, and put money out on just land.
Right.
Anything that happens needs to be secured by construction.
I think that's useful to know as we go forward. I think sometimes in the conversations I've had with constituents, there's a bit of a conflation of how some other jurisdictions have managed TIFs and how Geneva's historically managed TIFs. So I think it's useful to understand that we, we keep our risk quite small and that really it's, it's, you know, things that we've already committed to investing in, like the electrical upgrades that wind up providing some incentive for private developers to come in, make that an easier lift for them. So anyway, I really appreciate that. Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
That's all for me.
Anyone else? Alder Person Kilburg.
Just a couple of questions. And this is for the public's benefit, I think, more than anything. The role of the taxing bodies. In other words, what, what authority do the other taxing bodies have as it relates to the advancement of this TIF? And how is that dealt with? Obviously, does the school district have, carry the same weight as the township, let's say, which is a smaller entity? And do they have the authority then to more or less kill the TIF? Is it, is it a majority vote? Is it the EAV or the, the tax, it's the tax percentage as it relates to the?
The Joint Review Board, which is comprised of the varying taxing districts within this proposed TIF district, is a majority vote tribunal. They are all represented, they will all have a voice. There is, they don't, they can't kill it dead, but if they do not accept it and vote it down, it makes the road to traverse the process very difficult. But that is to come. They get their day to adva- to, to go through the facts, look at the information and make a decision based on their taxing body's best interests and the larger community's best districts, uh, best interests.
So you're saying the school district's weight as it relates to a decision is equal to the township's weight?
Correct, it is.
Okay. So in other words, there's no distinction as it relates to the size of the taxing body?
It is not like the UN Security Council where one vote can kill the thing, exactly.
But I think there could be some confusion as it relates to that and.
Well, there, there isn't actually. This Joint Review Board has been running for, since TIF 1 and I think all the taxing bodies have worked well and very cooperatively in each instance, and I don't think that's going to change. Interests may be different.
Sure.
And viewpoints may be different, but I think it's been cooperatively run since day one.
No, I don't have an opinion on where the other taxing bodies might sit on this issue. I'm just wondering to know that they're all, they're all weighted equally. Okay, and it's a majority vote of all entities that make it up. Okay. And this, and the next question I have is infrastructure. Obviously, the city has already invested in, in the Southeast Industrial Park. I know that obviously we've ordered transformers at a significant cost. I know that we've, we've brought water closer to the site. Is there an opportunity as it relates to the TIF that we can recoup those expenditures pre, pre-approval of the TIF at some point in time later on?
Well, I think it's, it's a substation investment.
Sure, yeah. I mean, that's a sizable investment. I know that we're looking at about $86 million here. I'm just wondering if it's possible that we can recoup maybe a, a small percentage of that at some point in time.
So, we do have, we do have proposed, proposed funding, which is a combination of all of these things. You could not solely have a TIF district to be able to just carry all of these funds. There's, there's not enough. I mean, the investment is.
Yeah.
Is that significant? The Electric Enterprise Fund has made decisions based on being an enterprise fund.
Okay.
At, at one point, a few years ago, we were looking to try to do that all through the TIF and with private equity. And, you know, you, you couldn't, you couldn't do it. But there is, there will be with the TIF. Not all the funds will be committed. You will have an opportunity to do other projects in the TIF besides the Corporate Park and you could make the decision to reimburse certain funds. Like the Water Fund, for instance, isn't the same type of enterprise fund as Electric. They don't have much of a contribution at all to the project. It's a different fund balance.
It's almost all electric then, as, as far as our investment out there thus far?
Electric had a lion's share of what had to be done. And that's probably was the biggest reason you didn't see development prior. And you had to have the coordination between the Electric Division and Economic Development and the private funding. Part of the, you know, challenge was that when you had all separate owners, a lot of the owners were expecting, you know, the city to build everything and bring everything to them and it was, it wasn't realistic. And that's where we started to think, you know, we really need to have a master developer with some depth that can carry some of this weight along with us. So there's been a lot of different attempts to get this done over the years, even during my tenure. So I think that you're, you're, you may be able to recoup some of the funds, but you won't be able to repay it. And it's different for each utility.
Okay, so you're saying there's a possibility that, that we could recover some of our pre-TIF expenditures?
Yes, we passed an inducement resolution years ago to be able to do that.
Okay. Okay, that's all, Ed. Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? We have a motion by Bowring, a second by Mayor on Resolution 2024-40. No other questions? I'll ask the clerk to please take the roll.
Do you, does the mayor, does the mayor, I just wanted to, and it's, and it's just majority.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Whenever you're ready.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno? Sorry. Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Meladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
Onto item two, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to, or forgive me, official count, we have nine. We have eight in favor, one against, two absent. Moving on to item two is closed session. I'll entertain a mission, a, a motion to adjourn to closed session for discussion of pending litigation. Motion by Kassarag, second by Marx. Please take a roll call vote.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Meladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby? Kilburg?
Aye.
We're going to adjourn to closed session. Anyone joining us for public comment? We would invite you to either step outside if you'd like, or you can hang out in the kitchen area. We shall not be long. This will be a quick, we are going to come out and take action on this matter as well. Happy to entertain a motion. We turn to open session. Marx makes the motion. Second by Kassarag. Roll call vote, whenever you're ready. City clerk.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Meladra?
Aye.
We are back in open session. Okay, is there anyone who wishes to make a motion regarding the settlement between the City of Geneva and Mr. James Childress? Stephanie, you want to add any details that? Ben, excuse me, I'm sorry. Ben, do you want to add any details prior to a formal motion being made? Okay.
Mayor, I recommend, I make a motion that we recommend approval of the Workman's Compensation Settlement Claim.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bowring. Any additional comments or questions regarding this action? A simple majority is required to pass this action. City clerk, please take the roll.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Meladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
The motion passes with eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes and two absent. Now it's public comment time. Anyone? New business from the dais? Motion to adjourn. Marx makes the motion. All in favor, please say aye. We're adjourned.